All right. Let's stamp our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Let's get right into this here. What I'd like to do is, a couple of things that we've got...
Call the meeting to order?
I'm sorry? Call the meeting to order.
You'd like to call the meeting to order?
A couple of things I'd like to do is, I'd like to get some advice from counsel. So I'd like to go into, what do we call it?
Executive session?
An attorney-client privilege session for the purpose of seeking and receiving legal advice?
Yeah, yeah, because we need some advice here.
Okay. On procedural matters, and yeah, so that's perfectly fine if you want some attorney-client advice.
Yeah, and I'd like to do that right off the bat, just early on.
Yeah, you need a motion.
I need a motion to go into client...
Attorney-client session.
Attorney-client session.
For the purpose of seeking and receiving legal advice.
Do I have a motion?
I think he just heard one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, can you please leave your room so we can discuss these things?
Want me to stay or go, Ron?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to stay or go?
Joe, I'd like you to hang out, okay?
Do you want me to make sure the cameras off before you go on?
Yes.
You almost got that, Joe.
David, you have to prepare as you say.
Do I have a motion to come back to regular session?
I'll make that motion.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That was a lively discussion.
Because you're making me work overtime with these legal issues.
We're going to start with the Homeland Towers application. Application number ZB24002. The applicant is seeking the following area variances for the construction of a wireless communications facility, including 150-foot-tall monopole to support equipment for Verizon Wireless and future collect...
Co-locators.
I'm not going to go into the setback. We've gone through this, so go ahead. You'll get the floor, sir.
Sure. Good evening. For the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder, here tonight to represent the applicants, Homeland Towers and Verizon Wireless. As the chairman stated, it is an application for 150-foot wireless tower to support the equipment for Verizon Wireless to fill a significant gap in service in the surrounding areas along Route 9. We've also been before the planning board during these concurrent reviews. Just last week, the planning board issued a negative declaration for the project, so now the zoning board is free and clear to take its action on the application. The application, again, is just for the rear yard variance and the side yard setback variance. The tower has been designed with a hinge point, so that in the unlikely event of a collapse, the tower will collapse completely within the property lines. But again, we've located the tower at the extreme rear of the property, so that we'd be the furthest distance from Route 9 from the street, and the property that we are closest to is an industrial property, the mining property, so we felt the impact was less in that direction than anywhere else on the property. Again, the planning board did issue a negative declaration at their last meeting, so we're here tonight to just answer any questions the board may have, as well as the public, but we would respectfully request that the board direct its staff to draft resolutions for an action.
Okay. I know there's a gentleman here who did submit some paperwork, and I'm sure he's going to want to come up, and he might have some questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Sir?
Thank you, sir, members of the board. Edward Bushak, 238 Carol Lane. And I've been opposed to the positioning of the cell tower at that location for, you know, since we found out about it last January. And I still feel that there's an alternate site that's better for this. I don't think there's enough room on that property for cell tower, a base of almost an acre. I'm wondering if the board members have been to that location?
Yes, I have.
Okay. It's going to be very tight, and it's right on the edge of the, a steep drop-off into the mine. And I'm concerned that it's going to go, it's going to go falling into that mine. And let me just check my notes here. There is a residence on that property that nobody acknowledges.
Yes, so he's the owner of the property?
Yes, yeah, but it's very close to a cell tower. I know they say there's no danger from radiation, but that remains to be seen. Many of our neighbors have Verizon cell service. I live on Carol Lane, so many of our residents have Verizon cell service. They don't have any problems. So the gap in coverage, you know, maybe needed to be addressed in the Phillips Town installations that they recently did and across from ESP and near Ritchie Electric. Maybe those needed to be boosted up instead of putting 150-foot cell tower right in front of the view of Fish Gill Ridge. And Sina Hudson has written a very powerful letter where they listed many, many arguments against having a cell tower in that location. So I ask you to look at the variance, see, you know, is this, is there enough room? And I ask you not to give them the variance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, you want to speak to some of those concerns?
So with the initial point about the need for the cellphone tower, the town did retain a wireless consultant. The planning board retained a wireless consultant who confirmed that there is a need for this cellphone tower in this location. So it's not just the applicant's position. There's been an independent third-party radio frequency engineer that was hired by the town who did confirm the need for this tower. It also confirmed that the tower is at the minimum height necessary to fill the gap in service regarding the impacts of radio frequency emissions. Again, our application includes a radio frequency emission study that confirms that it's compliant with the federal standards and thresholds. It's also a topic that's preempted based on telecommunications act. As far as the residents on the property, as you astutely stated, as the owner of the property, he's leased us this portion of the property, so we would feel that he's in approval of our being located here. We have an agreement. We have a lease with him. And then just one misstatement, the base of the facility is not anywhere near an acre. The base of the facility is only about 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. It's much smaller than an acre.
Does that include the guide wires, too?
So there is no guide wires with this type of tower. So this is a monopole, so it's just a slender tower, it's one pole. And again, as far as impacts to the ridge, this is a very slender pole, so we've done a full visual analysis report that took photos from various points along Route 9 and around in the surrounding area. It's much limited visibility. And then a small correction, the Sina Hudson letter actually did not make any objections to the facility itself. It just highlighted points that it wanted the planning board to take a deep dive on as part of its review. The planning board's planner absolutely took the football and ran with it and made sure that the planning board reviewed all of those topics, and the applicants provided the information that was requested for all of those topics. And the planning board, still at the last meeting, issued a negative declaration.
Now, you're addressing the, I guess they were concerned about blending in with the background and that sort of stuff. You're addressing those concerns, too?
Sure. So the, as we talked about, and I think in past applications or past meetings, the planning board has decided on a two-tone color for the tower. So what they've done or have decided to do that would help reduce the visual impact is the top part of the tower will be painted a sky color. This is still to be the exact color reviewed by the planning board, so at our next submission, we'll provide three color swatches for the sky color. And then the bottom part of the tower is going to be an earth-toned color. Again, the point of this is that when you're against the ridge line, they're going to match the break where the change of color is, so that the bottom part of the tower that's visible against the ridge line will be an earth-toned color to help blend in with that, and the top of the tower will be a sky color to help blend in with the sky. So it's, for here is a straight-on view. This is looking straight down the driveway of the property. As you can see, the bottom of the tower is a little bit darker. It'll probably be more of a brownish color or a dark gray color, and then the top part will be either a light blue or almost a white color. And we have that in a couple different, and here's the other location. We also showed, even though this is, our application is really just for this, which is just one carrier, the application does provide co-location space, so we did provide a full build-out scenario. That's not what we're proposing to build. This would be if Verizon was installed and three other carriers installed 12 antennas. We're speculative at this point about what they would be installing. For instance, just for an example, I know Dish Wireless only installs at this point in time three antennas for its sectors, so we've put 12 antennas as if Dish would install 12. More likely than not, they would probably install much less, probably only three antennas. That's because they only operate on the 5G spectrum. They don't have the same number of frequencies that the other carriers do. But that's just as an anecdotal representation of, you know, this is kind of what we expect to be a full build-out scenario, but it may actually be less than that.
Do you want to hear my questions? Okay, thank you. Well, I understand your concerns, sir, but it's a municipality. I mean, this is utility, you know? And being a utility, there's certain, there's certain allowances that we have to provide, you know? And I know in my personal, personally, I feel, what is it, 80%, 85% of your cell phones come from a cell tower? A 911 calls come from a cell tower?
Correct.
Actually, I think it's closer to 87%. And that's a key factor. That's a key factor that we cannot ignore. So anybody else have any questions or comments?
Is there anybody else out there that...
I'm sorry?
Is there anybody else?
There might be other members of the public.
Anybody else want to speak up? Nope. Okay. At this point, we should close the hearing on this, is that right? Close the public hearing?
Yeah, if you've got all the information that you need, you can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I think so.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So should we review the five factors or just go through the...
Well, you have a different set of criteria that applies because it's a utility, it's a cell tower. You know, there's, you know, with an area variance, it's not a use variance, but at the end of the day, you know, you have the five factors, but you also have the utility standard, the Rosenberg standard, that also, there's some case law that the applicant cites that applies that to the area variance context as well. At the end of the day, it's, you know, they had to demonstrate there's a gap in service. In other words, there's a need. They had to establish necessity, there's a gap in service, they have, which, you know, they provided their own RF data, and the town hired an RF engineer who, I think, confirmed that there is a need. I don't remember exactly what the need was, but I remember reading through that it was a capacity issue and a coverage issue.
Kind of hoping to hit our firehouse, but it doesn't go that far.
Yeah.
It doesn't go far away.
But it was a capacity and coverage. And then they have to prove that their proposal will solve, you know, that need. It fulfills that need.
I think they addressed that pretty good.
And I think that obviously they wouldn't be building if it wasn't going to fill that need, but I think the, you know, but the town's RF engineer confirmed pretty well that that's, that those criteria are met. And then the last criteria is they have to solve the need through the least intrusive means, you know, the less, the least intrusive method, the minimal, there's two different ways of putting it, the least intrusive means or a minimal intrusion on the zoning scheme, right? And I think that's what the applicant has been, you know, demonstrating before you is...
They spent a lot of time on that.
The search for alternatives is important, is it the least intrusive means? Is there some other way, some other location that could solve the need that they're trying to solve? Other different, you know, visual, the height, why does it have to be this height? And that's, you know, those are things that the applicant is advocating before you.
I know that they did spend a lot of...
I see Mr. Kenny sidling up. Is he have something to do with...
No, just to know where we're standing, this is part of the discussion, but alternatives, just a point I forgot to mention when I was responding to the public comment. We did do an additional review of alternatives at the request of the planning board, and at the last meeting, the planning board confirmed that those alternatives would actually be more intrusive, because we would need to clear out more trees, and we'd also be really close to the...
A higher tower, too, right?
What?
A higher tower, too, right?
Correct. Because they'd be lower elevations, they would require 190-foot tower. And as you know, the village or the zoning code for the town sets the maximum height for 185 foot for the tower, so that would actually require another variance.
I know they did homework on that, so...
So procedurally, the telecommunications act requires any resolution deciding these issues to be in writing and addressing various, you know, various criteria. So what you should do is just maybe discuss right in an open session, how do you all feel about these, you know, the criteria that are to be applied, and give me some direction as to how you feel, so I can draft a resolution that complies with the telecommunications act and have it ready and circulated in advance of the next meeting for your review and consideration at the next meeting.
Well, I think they've done, you know, they have addressed all of those issues. They spent a considerable amount of time hitting all the different sites. There was five different sites?
Originally, there was seven different sites when we first applied, which we had...
But you never got response back from two of them, right?
And then responded back to two additional ones in January, and then again, just most recently in the summer, two additional ones then as well.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I don't, you know, I did go through it, and a lot of it was like my eyes were falling out of my head, you know, trying to read this stuff, you know? But it, to me, they addressed all of those issues, you know? The service issues and so forth.
You're of the view that they satisfied the criteria to be applied?
I believe they have, yeah, yeah. But is anybody else, Kathy, you know...
I think, you know, when you look at the other areas that it could go in, there's going to have to be a lot of downing of trees, and that definitely impacts some of the arguments that is being made on the current location as well. Negative declaration on seeker. And then, you know, with the radiation issue, I mean, one could argue that mines on some level might, might have some, you know, you walk through Grand Central and the radiation level on that is off the charts, and that's fine. And then finally, I'd have to say that there's a lot of hiking trails that this cellphone tower is going to service on top of a lot of the outlying areas, and I am a hiker, and I do know that it is getting crowded up there. And there's a lot of tourists who don't wear proper hiking. But that's another issue, but it does require 911 calls at time, and that's very important from a life and death standpoint, and when you do go up there, you do lose service. So I do see the need for it. And then I'd also argue that, just from talking to a bunch of people in other areas that might not have service, as far as housing values are concerned, they're actually concerned that their housing values are going to go down, because as people don't have landlines anymore, having cellphone service is actually extremely important when you're buying a home. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Kathy.
Much the same. I was just concerned about the 911 coverage in the area. No spotty service, that's, that would be bad for the public. And then we addressed, we also addressed the safety issues, and that we determined that everything was okay with that thing falling down and from the tower, things like that, that won't happen. So I'm good right now. I think we satisfied a lot.
I'm going to go, too, with the 911 issue.
That was my primary issue.
Still wish you could be able to hit the Glenham Firehouse, but we're a little, a couple hundred yards out of that range. Anyway, we have no more questions or comments.
So it sounds like all four of you were in favor. You think that they've satisfied the criteria, so I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to direct me to prepare a resolution granting the application and to have it ready for your review in advance of the next meeting.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we get into the basis industrial, Root 9 and D, application ZB24003. The applicant is seeking the following area variances for the redevelopment of 4.98, thereabouts acres, property located in the GP zoning district. No proposed construction activity is, no construction activity is proposed in the RF-15 zoning district. The redevelopment shall consist of the demolition of the Red Pepper Diner over there, the Orange County Transit Buildings, for the construction of 112,580-foot-square-foot two-story self-storage facility with a lower basement level, 2,270-foot-square-foot fast-food establishment, and a 3,045-square-foot car wash. The existing Sunoco Station food mart shall remain. There are six variances that you guys will look for. One is a floor area variance, and I'm just going to read them briefly. Floor area variance, the boundary setback for the drive-through facility that's over by the fast food, off-street parking, variance in 99 parking spaces where 156 are required for the proposed uses on the site. Off-street loading, instead of loading, seven loading spaces, you want to get that down to two. Maximum building height, the variance of a half a story, well, that, you're considering the basement as part of, you know, so...
Correct.
The monuments sign, you want two signs, and where one is on the code, and the county has something to say about that.
Correct.
So those are the six variances, and I know that you've made a modification to the plan, and we had discussed in detail the parking around the food mart and the service station. And you did accommodate that, and we appreciate that. Reluctantly, but you did it.
They are now zoning compliant.
The thing is, and we discussed this at length here, we believe that, you know, all these other variances, well, the sign variances is something that we need to discuss in more detail, but all the other variances, you know, the building height, the off-street loading, the parking, the drive-through and the floor area variance, that's probably, I think you're going to satisfy, we're going to, we're satisfied with those, those things. The sign, we'll probably want you to put one sign up, okay? In the middle. You know, that's, the county says, what do you need one on either side? And yeah, put one up in the middle, keep it simple, you know? But the concern that we have is the, the planning board wants to review this again. So what we're willing to propose at this point is go back to the planning board, okay? With this amended plan. And if they adjust, they approve this, we will come back, and then we will approve these variances.
Can I be heard on that issue?
Okay.
So we received preliminary site plan approval from the planning board, right? That allowed, and a negative declaration concluding CIGRA. That allowed us to move from that board to your board for the requested variance.
Right.
The planning board can't take further action on our final site plan approval until we get the variances approved. So we have to go back to them no matter what.
I understand. But when I, when I'm ready to give you any approvals at this point, because there was a key factor that was misrepresented to the planning board, okay? And they need to review this again. They need, you know, when it comes to traffic flow and everything, and we don't want to pigeonhole them into a specific plan.
But I don't think they, I'm sorry to interrupt. They're not going to be pigeonholed into a plan. I mean, this planning board doesn't get boxed in. When we go back there, if you approve these variances and give us the variance for the parking, and we go back with the plan that shows these additional parking spaces that we gave or that we provided, and the planning board says, we absolutely hate that and we're not going to approve that, then your variances would fall away, and we would have to come back to your board for a different set of variances based on the plan that the planning board approved.
Well, what we're saying is, you know, we hear you, but if you give us the parking spaces that we asked for, which you did, and you reapply them, okay? We're going to say, hey, good job, man.
No, I understand, but if you were to approve us tonight, for instance, right? The resolution comes out the next month, we're able to go back to the planning board and continue and process our application, and we really don't lose that much time. If we go back now with this plan, then the planning board will likely say, we want to have amended preliminary approval. It's a public hearing at the planning board to come back here to get approval, to go back to the planning board to have another public hearing. I'm not going to be back for six months.
Four, probably four. But the thing is, but, and I hear you, and I'm not ar...
I just think you're covered...
I hear you, but the thing is, if this thing was correct in the first place, you know, it probably would have been a lot easier than what's going, what's happening right now.
Correct in terms of parking or correct in terms of the lease? I mean, that was in, that was an error on our part. And I mean, I just want to correct one thing in the summary letter.
I understand, but the thing is, this impacts the traffic flow, and that's what they're concerned with.
Correct. And the, but that's my whole point, right? If you approve us, that does not box the planning board in. It does not eliminate their ability to deny our application based on what gas line, I mean, what I wish gas line would have piped in eight months ago, nine months ago when we started the application a year ago. But it doesn't prohibit the planning board from saying, no, now that this is brought to our attention, now that it's 2037, we feel differently, and they still have that opportunity, whether we have the variances in hand or not. It's really just a procedural and timing, and it just, everything happens just a little bit quicker, you know? Time is money, and we would like to just be able to continue moving the project along.
Well, I, again, I hear you, but...
I guess I don't understand the downside for your board, right? If you approve us and the planning board doesn't like it, we have to come back. If you approve us and the planning board is okay with it, then we're in good shape to go.
I don't think they're going to be okay with it.
But then we would have to come back to you.
So like I said, that's my recommendation, and I would very much like you to do that, because you were also supposed to submit this plan to the planning board. Did you do that?
I was waiting to get the results of this meeting and then go back to the planning board. I was hoping to, you know, based on what I watched, I was hoping that the providing the parking that you requested, getting them to be fully zoning compliant, I mean, again, we provided you with the lease, they did as well. They made representations that they had an approved site plan, and they were entitled to certain things. To my knowledge, that site plan doesn't exist. They weren't able to produce it for you. When you look at the lease that they have, they have 125 by 60-foot is the definition of the premises, and their use is not supposed to interfere with any of the adjoining uses. That's in the lease agreement. It's not, they don't have specific parking spaces.
Yeah, but it's still, it's part of the parcel, so we have to take that. We've been down this road. We've argued this.
And I agree we should take that into consideration. We absolutely need to take that, and we have. We heard you. You said, I mean, frankly, I think if we gave three or four spots, that might have satisfied you guys, because you didn't say we want them compliant. We said, please provide them some parking. We brought them from being deficient to being zoning compliant now, which they don't have a... a site plan, and they have nothing that entitles them to that, and we're, you know, we're working here to try to make everything work for everybody on this site.
I hear you, but, you know, the, the traffic flow does not take into consideration of the unloading of the food trucks. There's no place to do that.
And I'm not arguing that we shouldn't talk about traffic flow at the planning board.
And this is not, this is not part of, this is outside of our jurisdiction, but again, that's got to be addressed, it's got to be reviewed and addressed.
Agree 100%, and it will be reviewed and addressed when we go back to the planning board, right? I mean, whether, if you grant us the variance thing, we're still going to review that and address that, and if the planning board isn't happy, they're going to say, no, we're not happy, give us a new plan. If you have a problem, come back to the ZBA for a variance.
David, I'm hitting a wall here.
Well, you're articulating something that the applicant disagrees with and is trying to persuade you to go a different direction, so.
Right.
It's not really a wall, it's a, it's, you know, it's-
I don't want to go in that direction.
It's a disagreement. I think, I think, I think your concern, Ron, Mr. Chairman, is that if, you know, if and when this gets back to the planning board, it's going to go back to the planning board one way or the other, it has to, your concern is that if the planning board recommends any substantial changes in the layout that might impact parking or other things, that what are we doing? Let's, let's just, let's make sure that they have done that first and then come back, and that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
And the applicant is saying, well, we want to take that risk, if they do, then we'll have to come back to you anyway, we'd rather take the chance to save that time. And, you know, you're saying, well, we'd rather you, you know, we'd rather issue the variances based upon what the final plan is, not issue variances based upon what we think the plan looks like right now, but we think it might change at the planning board.
Does that sound?
So it may not be a net savings of time, but I think that's the disagreement that is being identified here.
I agree with everything that he just said, and what I would say is, the planning board may change aspects of the plan that don't relate to parking or any of the other things that we're discussing at this board.
Well, I think it will, because if you look at the, and I'll just point out one thing, the handicap is the furthest parking spot away from the food mart, you know.
We could put that anywhere.
I understand that.
We could put it right next to the-
I understand that, but that's out of the scope of this board, you know, and if it's on your plan, that's where it's going to go.
And I think, you know, one of the other things that I think, I think you had mentioned to me was the entrance and exit to the property that you thought it might be redesigned because the tenant is going to be there now till 2037 instead of only a couple more years, and that might impact what the-
Right, access to the, access to the pumps.
Might impact what the planning board does with site layout as a whole over in that lower level property.
That whole, that whole area.
Again, that, I think, was one of the concerns.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, I'm, I guess I'm missing what the concern is, right? That's not really part of our variance ask, right? Our variance ask is within the-
Again, but it's part of the traffic flow, which is the zoning, the planning board is acutely concerned about.
But, but the question is, right, if we're okay with everything else in one monument sign, so let's put all those other variances aside, really we're talking about parking and traffic flow, traffic flow clearly in the planning board's purview, the real question for your board is, do you think that the 57 spaces that we're offering is sufficient for the site, right? And you've got the county planning board saying, we're already overparked, we added seven more spaces, but they're saying we're overparked, the planning board thought we were overparked. So the question isn't how the plan is going to operate or where the handicap spot is, the question is, do you believe, based on the five factors in the balancing test, whether the parking we're provided is adequate for the site?
Well, don't you think we should be concerned about the placement of those parkings too? I mean, if you added a bunch more spaces now by the, by the fast food place, wouldn't address our concerns, so.
Well, no, and-
The placement of these parking spaces too are-
Correct, and, but you see, we place them for the gas station, and when we get back to the planning board, we may say, hey, look, we think we're overparked for the restaurant, and we want to landbank those spaces. If as and when the town says, you need to build them, you need to build them, but those parking spaces get counted towards something that we can provide. So my only point is, I mean, your board, you are or are not comfortable with the number of parking spaces. If you are, I don't see what's prohibiting you from voting, the plan can change.
Well, I think it's the placement of the parking spaces, because there's a road between the food mart and the parking spaces, so, and the handicap's on the other side of the road.
But the handicap can move, we have four spaces-
I understand, I under, I get it, but, you know.
We're just arguing here, I'm not going to win this one with you.
But like I said, I'd like you to go back to the planning board, and we would rather make a determination on the final plan, that's what we are looking for, okay?
I respectfully wish it was another way, but I understand your position. Is there anything, I mean, can we talk about the plan a little bit, I mean, before we just leave and go back to the, I mean, do you like the seven spaces? Are you generally satisfied?
Yeah.
With that, is that something that, I mean, I just want to make sure that we've addressed your concerns, if we're going to go back to the planning board and start spinning wheels there, I just want to at least, I can make the representation.
You provided 11 parking spaces for the food mart, which I think that would be sufficient, okay? We know that there are people coming in and out of it all the time, that's a given, okay? But again, the planning board's going to be interested in the traffic flow around the gas pumps, you know, the gas truck, you know, and so forth, and probably, you know, between those parking spaces and the food mart, you know, and it may only be moving those parking spaces closer to, it may be something simple like that, you know, but again, we want to be able to make a determination on the final plan, so.
I hear you, I mean, the problem is, you're never making a determination on the final plan, because once I leave here, I still have to go back to the planning board, and they still have the authority-
We're okay with-
To modify that plan.
And we appreciate the fact that you gave us the parking that we asked for, and we ask that the planning board keep those, keep the number of parking spaces that we asked for, so.
All righty, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
But one issue, if you want to address the signage, the sign issue.
Oh, the sign. There's the county, the county, where is this?
Yeah, I saw that in their letter, I mean, I don't think they're appreciating the-
It's a huge building.
And again, what I would say is that if we were to develop, right now it's separate parcels, if we were to develop each of the parcels separately, we'd be able to have more than two monument signs, right? It's not that we want to have extra signs because we want to have extra signs, we want to have extra signs because we have 600 feet of frontage.
Yeah, but everybody's going to see that building, you can't miss the building, come on. You're going to, you can see that building a mile away, you know, come on.
We can make the modification of the signs.
So actually, if you come up with one sign and withdraw that, withdraw that, that'll make us happy too, you know, okay?
I guess when I get back from the planning board.
All right. All right, thank you, sir.
So I would suggest that you entertain a motion. Pick, what's the next best date that reasonably gives an opportunity to get to the planning board and get back here? Is it the, is it November?
Well, this is what, September?
Put it on, continue the public hearing to, which, certainly not October.
Well, certainly not, I mean, I would say put it on in December, and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
December?
December. I mean, Debbie, do you, I mean-
And, but if it comes sooner, you know, we'll entertain it.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we put it on for November officially? That way it's on in November, and if you're not ready, you can, you know, you can write a letter or let us know, and then it'll be on the agenda for sole purpose of putting it over till December or wherever you are. But that way, you know, because it's hard to do it the other way.
Yeah, absolutely, agreed.
All right.
Nineteenth, okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so you just need to make a motion to continue the public hearing on November-
Motion to continue the public hearing till November 19th.
November 19th.
Second.
Hold in favor. Okay, thank you. Okay. Now. Heritage Financial.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, let me just read this here for the timely signs of Kingston on behalf of Heritage Financial, application number ZB two four zero zero four. Applicant is requesting the following variance for the construction of the seven-foot, two-inch high monument sign for the existing Heritage Financial, I still call it Rhinebeck, but, you know, formerly known as Rhinebeck Savings Bank, height of one foot, two inches, where not more than a maximum succeed, okay. There are three variances here, one is the height, one is the setback from the road, and the other is the legality of the sign, okay, the LED sign. So we talked about that, did you see the letter from the county?
I did, yes, yes, I did.
You want to talk to that, because, you know?
Yes, I'm happy to.
We have our own opinions on this, and we'd like to hear what you have to say about that.
I'm happy to. So just to know, we also have Tom Cornelis, the executive VP of Heritage Financial here as well, if you have any questions for him, we do have him available. I'd like to read a letter from Heritage Financial Credit Union if I can that I also received. Can I read that first? Okay. Heritage Financial Credit Union recently acquired what used to be the Rhinebeck Bank branch located in Waplanders Falls, New York. As we performed minor renovations on the branch to be alignment with our brand, we refaced our current outdoor sign on the front of our property for a logo in an effort to inform the community of this business change. As a credit union, it is our mission to promote financial wellness and give back to the communities that we serve. With HFCU being new to the Waplanders Falls community, we want to ensure that our information and financial assistance messaging is seen by our surrounding community. This led us to the opportunity in updating the current backlit sign on our branch property to be digitally enabled sign where we can update, change, and revise messaging for our community's awareness. The sign would provide us with the ability to showcase new information for members who are part of the surrounding community, alert the community of events for them to visit or get involved in, alert the community of any special financial promotions to assist them in their financial journey, and as well, provide a greener way to promote our services, which reduces the printed content that you normally see with things like banners and promotions such as that. So you touched on the point about the distance from the road. The sign that's currently there is indeed 15 feet from the road.
Yeah, we're aware of the restrictions there.
Right, I know, but you mentioned that-
The sidewalk in the back of it, yeah.
But you mentioned there was a variance needed for the setback, so that's why I was a little confused with that.
How many feet is it?
15 feet from, to the very front edge of, from the road.
I think that's the, if it's-
It doesn't depict it on the site plan, that's-
Right, that, I understand, that is correct, yeah, so I'm happy to provide that additional information, you know, at a later date there.
Okay. So, yeah, then may address that issue.
Yep. Now, the square footage info, so I see the listing that was put on here for the square footage, but that size that was listed includes the unmarked base, the 23-inch unmarked base, so with my calculations, which is really only a 48 by 62-inch sign, if you include the upper panel and the LED board, that comes out to 20.66 square feet per side for a total of 41.32 square feet, which puts it at a 4.66 square foot oversize per side, so a total of 9.32 square feet overall versus what was listed on that paperwork there, so I just-
I think the height was the problem.
Right, but it was mentioned that, about the square footage size, but that was, at least from my calculations, that's incorrect. The base is totally blank, it's only there just to house the steel structure underneath it there.
But still, it's a height of six feet is the-
Correct, I'm relating directly to the square footage though, because the square footage is listed on here, says that it is, let's see here, that was 16 square feet per side, it says the proposed, appears to be at 28.2 square feet per side, which is incorrect, that it is only 20.66 square feet per side.
What was that, 26?
It's listed on here in the paperwork that you guys provided, 28.2 square feet per side, but not counting that unmarked base, it is only 20.66. So it is still oversized, I'm not denying that, but it's definitely much less than what was listed on here by not counting that unmarked base.
But it's the height.
It's the height. It's the height. We can, I understand.
I think what the applicant is saying-
I hear what, I hear.
If I'm hearing it right, we're just identifying which variances are necessary. There's no question they need a height variance.
Yeah.
If I'm hearing it right, and I'm taking notes, so bear with me if I got it wrong. If I just took a left turn and you're on, you take a right turn.
That's okay.
But the sign area, it looks like the county planning and the planning board say you need a sign area variance that wasn't in the original application, I think you're agreeing, but saying it's not as much as what they're saying is.
That is correct.
Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So, do we, do we know, Joel, on the, is there any dispute as to what the area actually is, what the number actually is? I think the applicant's saying-
It's the way in the code that you read on how to make the square footage of the actual sum. Like, if it's just a sign that's got blue and green on it up here, blue and green down here, you don't count that in the square footage.
Don't count the frame.
No, they did count it down. So your closure to the sum may be less than that.
Thank you. So whatever it is, we'll need, you know, usually there's like a denial letter that says, you know, you're, you know, the, I compute the square footage as X, and so, and the code requires Y, that you need a variance for that difference. So, you know, whenever this is ready, and there's another issue that I'm sure we're going to be speaking of in a second, but, you know, a, I guess an amended application will be necessary, and, you know, that, whatever that determination is, whatever the square footage as determined by Joel is, and whatever the overage is, that will be added, so you'll need height and area.
Understood.
And then we need to talk about the third issue.
Understood.
Okay.
So moving on to the height, so the main reason that the current sign is thrown over height is merely to elevate what we've currently proposed high enough off the ground. My feeling, or our feeling is that the, there are a minimum of six signs that are within eye shot of the current sign proposed that are well, well, well over the height that are allowed here. We have, obviously Dutcha Stadium is right there, there's a Gulf Gas Station, there's a Beer World, there is, looks like a plaza of some sort next to Sunoco, we have the Stadium Plaza sign, which is also well over the height, and the, yes, and again, the Sunoco. So, you know, we feel that, I'm, do we know if any of these signs were physically permitted? Like, how do they get such tall signs allowed? I'm sorry?
The stadium sign, that's a county, they don't talk to us, they do what they want.
I understand, still within the zone, but I understand what the rest of them-
They do what they want, okay, so, and we questioned that, and they said that if they had to comply with every municipality, every town, you know, nothing would ever get done, so that's why the county-
I understand, yeah.
We get that.
I disagree when counties and municipalities do things that the regular person's not allowed to do.
We could be spinning our wheels all day about that, but in this case here, I don't know about any of these other signs, we're talking about this sign, so.
Yes, basically, the sign that we're trying to propose here basically gets dwarfed by the rest of these signs, and by the time that you pass the Sunoco Station, our goal is to have a higher sign so that it can be acquired visually much faster. I mean, no, we're not asking for a very large variance of that, it's only a 14%, in my mind, that's not really that much, I understand it is over what the code allows, but it's not like we're looking to double the height, or triple the height, or quadruple it like a lot of these signs I just mentioned all clearly are. And I'm happy to provide these photos to the board if you'd like.
We hear you, we're not, we hear you.
Okay. I'm pretty sure they're all over square footage size as well.
Okay. The biggest issue here is the LED sign itself, and according to the county, that's not allowed within our code, it's not a permitted sign.
Okay.
So, we're in, we're in a position that we can't approve this right now because we need a determination of whether it's legal or not.
Okay.
Okay? So, we're going to ask you to get a determination to find out if this is legal, and, so we can have some direction on how to move forward with this.
A determination from who?
We would-
From the building inspector.
The building inspector.
So the problem is, the, you know, county has pointed out, and the planning board has pointed out in their letters that there's a question as to whether this LED is actually a permitted sign at all, given the motion elements of it.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, you mentioned motion, this is a stagnant message board, which I did speak to the building inspector about, I was asked specifically whether we were applying for a stagnant message or- I was asked specifically whether we were applying for a stagnant message or a sign of motion. I'm not sure why that question would even be asked if a digital board was not allowed.
Well, did you, did you see the letter from the county planning?
Uh, I have one.
And from the planning board?
Has one that was sent to me this morning, I believe it was, yes.
Yeah, so they, they have raised a question, you know, about whether it's, you know, whether it's legal or not. I've not seen any written determination from the building inspector. The way, the building inspector is the one in the first instance that has the authority and, and actually the sole party that has the authority to actually interpret the code.
Mm-hmm.
And since the county is saying, look, we're reading, we're reading this to say it's not a permitted sign, and the planning board is sort of saying the same thing, you know, and the county is saying, look, we can't even review this, and so therefore this board can't even review this until we know whether you need a variance from that section or not. And the only way to know whether we need a variance from that section or not is for the building inspector to make the determination. This board can't make that determination, can't pass, even pass on the issue.
Okay.
In the air. It just doesn't have the jurisdiction to do it. So we need, we need the building inspector to be the first one to make that determination.
Okay.
And, you know, what happens from there, you know, whatever his determination is, what this board is allowed to do and what you need to do are then decided from there.
Okay.
For example, if he makes a determination, I disagree with the county. I think it is allowed. Well, then it's allowed. And, you know, unless somebody else challenges that and appeals that to this board, that's a set of facts that this board then works with, and then they have, would have a basis to override the county. If Joel says, I agree with the county, it's not permitted, then you have to add that as one of the variances you're asking for.
Okay.
And that's, so where this board is in sort of a spot where it can't act until that issue is decided, given now what the county has raised.
Do we know if the building inspector was consulted about the digital signs at the two fire departments that are very near to this location as well as the one right in the next park?
He's well aware of that. We've discussed that.
Okay, because I mean.
It may be that there's a difference because it's not a commercial property. I don't know. I haven't looked at the issue.
Yeah, apparently there are exemptions, exceptions for that.
But I don't know. That'll be part of his determination.
Okay, yeah, because most times when I see from different municipalities, if there is something that is allowed by a fire department or a civic organization, it is clearly listed in that, in that code versus it just being them doing what they do.
Here again, that's, that's, we don't understand.
I just want to bring up the point. Just so that it's on record there.
We discussed that.
Okay.
You know? You said it was a static sign. Is it always going to be a static sign?
The message would change.
Of course, I mean, these LEDs, you could pre-program them and, you know, down the line.
If you're legally allowed to, yes. So they do have the capabilities of doing full motion. You can put a video on this, you know, if you're legally allowed to do that. But I got to be honest, all the municipalities that I've worked with within and gotten approval for these, none of them allow motion. You'll see people still doing it because they weren't told that they, you know, after they just, they're going to test the waters and do it, and then unless they're told not to, they're going to continue to do it. You know, the credit union here is aware that if it is allowed, it's only going to be a static message that will not change for a certain period of minutes, whatever that might be.
Right.
Because there is, you know, for an effective message, you don't want to have scrolling and rolling.
Exactly.
Flashing. It is quite distracting, you know.
Exactly.
Don't get it wrong here, I understand that, which is why we don't like to do that. And again, I think I mentioned before how the board's auto dim at night so that it's not so bright and distracting.
Yeah.
In lower light.
Like, that might be what, you know, part of what you want to present to Joel in connection with his, you know, determination.
So I guess.
Whatever you're, you can liaison with Joel, but Joel is going to be the one that makes the determination.
Okay.
And then everyone's going to, you know, have their rights determined based on that. Which direction does everybody go from there?
Right, we need some, we need some parameters. That's really.
I understand.
So in the meantime, I did look up the code on interpretations and so forth. Boards can be the ones that request it, request the interpretation. There is a procedure, unfortunately, it's a little cumbersome, right? There's a new law in 2022 when it comes to interpretations, and again, you know, I'm looking at it, interpreting it on the fly, but basically what it says is that if a town official or a board or a member of the public, any of them, can request the interpretation. And if they do, then the, the building inspector has to make the determination, but then people have to be put on notice of that decision.
What people are you referring to?
I'll tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, let me, so you want to write it down. The section is fifty dash twenty-eight of the code. So I'm looking at it kind of fresh and for the first time now as well. Okay? What it says is that once the building, it says, "In the event that the building inspector is requested to render a code interpretation by a town official or a board or by a member of the public as applied to a particular property or a pending land use application," that seems to be this, right? "Upon rendering the interpretation," right, "the building inspector shall," so the building inspector then makes the interpretation or determination, then he's got to put people on notice of what he's determining. It's not just relevant to you and to this board. There might be nearby property owners that are impacted that want to be, that are required by law to be put on notice of that interpretation.
Okay.
So it's not just done in stealth, and they're like, I didn't, I didn't even know. Nobody told me.
Okay.
So what has to be done is, it has to be sent by first-class mail, a copy of the interpretation to the property owners within five hundred feet of the property, right? Number two, a copy has to be made, has to be mailed to the owners of the real property, okay? Giving you, this is the interpretation, and the date and certain other information about it, right? And that it says, and that notices that anybody that's aggrieved by it and wishing to challenge this, challenge it, have the right to appeal that to this board, letting people know what the limits are. And then also send by email to the official town email addresses, the interpretation of the supervisor, the clerk, the chairman of the zoning board, or the chairman of the planning board. So he's got to email it to everybody, and then he's got to post it on the town's website. So it's relatively benign, but it looks, it looks like a big thick set of things, but it's, interesting parties have to be put on notice of it. And the board says, "Until such time as the notice and posting required have been completed, the interpretation," that's interesting, it almost, almost looks like it's a typo. It says, "shall go into effect." It probably means shall not go into effect, but in any event. "In the event that the building inspector is requested to render the code interpretation by a town official or a board in connection with a land use application, the cost of the mailing shall be borne by the applicant." If the building inspector is requested by a member of the public, then the member, that member of the public bears the cost. So if you've got a random member of the public saying, "I disagree," and I want the building inspector, you can't hoist that cost onto you. But if it's like here, if it's a matter of course because the county and the planning board have made these comments, the board requests the interpretation, the cost of those mailings is borne by the applicant.
Okay, I understand.
That's what, that's.
Part of the escrow account? Yeah, that makes sense.
So it's going to be, you're in for a little bit of a delay while this is done, unfortunately.
Okay.
But it's got to be done because the county, you know, the GML, it's, it's, it's an impediment to the board really acting, so unfortunately, I guess it's got to get done.
Okay, and then if the determination is that it is allowed, then that would go away as a variance.
Right.
Point, and if it was determined that that is not allowed, we could still proceed with the variance application for the digital marquee, correct?
Correct. You would then add that.
Yes.
As an added point of relief that you're requesting to, you know, or you could challenge, you could do two things, not to give you legal advice, but it's.
I'll take it.
By law, it's, you could, if you disagree with the interpretation, you could appeal that and say, hey, I think the building inspector is wrong for the following reasons.
Okay.
In the alternative, you could then ask for a variance, say, okay, if either of you uphold it, we think we're entitled to relief. That's the way these things would typically go.
Okay, thank you. Are we able to continue to discuss the two variances that we're already talking about here, the height and the area, or does that need to happen after this determination?
It's probably wiser, more wise to wait.
Okay.
Because we're not even, we're not even noticed for a public hearing, so it's probably best to be, to get into the nitty-gritty until we know what's the universe of relief that you're asking for, and then handle it all at the same time with a public hearing.
Okay.
That's my, it doesn't mean you can't talk about it, but that would be probably the easier, more efficient way to handle it, unless there's something in particular that you want to hear about right now from the applicant or that the applicant's dying to let you know about right now.
Okay.
And we, we understand the placement of the sign, you know, that there are very limited limitations between a road and sidewalk and so forth, and I think that sidewalk is part of the general plan or something like that with the way it, you know, circling around, you know. So, and you got to work with that, you know, unless you move the sign, which means now you got to move electric and everything else, and I don't think you want to do that. So it really comes down to the height of the sign and the LED sign itself, you know? Okay? And maybe, maybe you don't even need the height.
We'll see.
Just, just dropping that hint there, you know? Okay?
All right. Any comments on the square footage, the, the overage in square footage?
Well, you're, again, you're restricted to the size of the sign, you know, the width of the sign and the height, you know, so whatever that square footage is, you know, I mean, there's only so many feet between the road and the, you know, and the sidewalk. So.
Okay.
And then you got the height, and that's going to determine the square footage. That's what I was thinking when I was saying that the height, you know, was, you know?
Okay. So the next step would be that we speak directly to the, to the building inspector, get a determination on that. At that point, we would come back for a public hearing at that point?
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I think you can officially take a motion to request the interpretation, and that way it's clear, Joel, you know, Joel's got a clear, you know, direction from you, from now that I've read this code, that that's, that's a perfectly, well, it's legal and contemplated by the code.
All right, so we make a motion to request a declaration.
And a determination.
A determination.
Motion to request a termination from the building inspector?
Yeah, in regard to the.
In regards to the legality of the sign, correct?
You got it.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And put out these guys on for next, for, we should get that determination probably in a week or two before the next meeting, right?
Phil, I have to amend your application based on what that says, so that's up to you.
Okay, all right.
If you could put us on, that'd be, that'd be great, because I'm happy to jump on it immediately.
All right, let's put you on for the next meeting, and, and if you don't have the.
The only thing, the only thing I'm going to jump in and say is, the language of the code is kind of restricting in terms of the timeframe. If I'm, if I'm looking at this, it's basically setting up this procedure where the determination is made and then it gets sent out as, with all the sections that we just discussed.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
And then it says, you know, people, including, including the applicant, if the applicant's aggrieved by it, the applicant and anybody else that's aggrieved by it, let's say there's a member of the public that says, that's not, you know, that's not right, you know, I want to appeal that, and agree, somebody withstanding, has to be an aggrieved person withstanding or whoever.
Right now, we don't even have a public hearing yet, though.
But they, no, no, but this is the interpretation. This is why it's like.
Oh, they're sixty days?
It's a, they have sixty days to appeal that determination to the zoning board. And, but it goes into effect once the notice and posting is completed. So there's a sixty days.
So we're looking at December. So we're looking at three months here.
Let me see. There's sixty days from the date on which the interpretation was rendered. Okay? That's, any aggrieved party has sixty days from the date of the interpretation, Joel's interpretation, to challenge it.
Right, if he approves it though, then we're able to move, if he interprets it that it's allowed, we can move directly to the next step. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Right. The no is, let's say there's an aggrieved party, let's say the next door neighbor.
Oh, that disagrees with his.
Gets copies of this and says, hey, wait a second. I've got sixty days.
Got you.
From the date of that to file it. I mean, I think you could proceed at your own risk, and, you know, but it might be rendered null and void if the board ends up going back the other way. It's a kind of, as you can see, it's a, it's a little bit of a procedural rat's nest that's unfortunately necessary.
Sorry.
By these issues raised that, you know? But it does say that the, again, if, with the typo, it's hard to, hard to actually interpret this, but it says, "Until such time as the notice and posting required by this section have been completed, the subject interpretation rendered by the building inspector shall go into effect." It's clear to me that that means it shall not go into effect until such time, right? Shall not go into effect until such time as the notice and posting. So the interpretation is rendered on date X, right? That starts the sixty days running.
Yeah.
Then notice is given to everybody. Once the notice is done and it's sent out, then the interpretation takes effect, but then there's sixty days for an aggrieved party to challenge it retroactive to the date it was actually made, not on the date that the notice was given. It's, it's like.
The date of its determination.
It's got some, it's got some timing issues. Point being, larger point, the reason I brought it up just now is, just because Joel renders a decision, if he renders a determination in the next week or two or three, whenever it is, doesn't necessarily mean it's prudent to come back at the very next meeting.
I understand.
Because there's sort of a built-in notice period that might cause some uncertainty.
Yep.
So not trying to slow you down, but just, I think prudence kind of dictates maybe an extra month.
We understand why this happened.
Built in an extra month.
You know, so.
All right.
Sorry.
So do we calendar it or? Should we put it out for December?
It's, it's, you've now officially requested the interpretation. It's now up to you to choose your own, your own path. It's not on for a public hearing. You, I don't think you need a motion, but it might be wise to make a motion to put it on.
I think we should.
On your agenda, not for a hearing, but on your agenda, you know, you could, you could do it just to check in to see next month. More than likely, it probably makes more sense to check in, put it, put it on the agenda next for, for November.
So after the next.
What status is on the determining, you know?
So after the next meeting that happens, whether it's in sixty days, in November, December, wherever that is, at that point, is there still additional meetings that have to be had in order to get approval?
It probably will be, you know, I would, probably, you know?
What would that be though? What would that be, though? That would be with the county? That would be still the planning?
No, that would be here.
ZBA?
You have to amend your application here because I have to, based on what happens, I have to resend it to the county, and they get 30 days again.
Yeah, the county has said, you know, "We're only giving this to you as a courtesy at this point. The applicant's, the application is incomplete for review, which preliminary comments, but you've got to, you've got to resend." That's the box that they're checking off.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if they amend it, I have to send it back to planning again.
Oh, yeah.
So it's got to be planned.
Yes. Yeah. So look, it...
Let's put it on for November.
You can put it on for October or November. I wouldn't put it on later than November. You could put it on for October just to see where are things. I don't know if you're going to get as far as anybody really wants to by October. It might be a waste of your, you know...
It'd be a waste of your time to come here.
You're trying to just come here for no reason.
I'm just trying to see if it's able to continue on during that 60-day period, so that way, if we still have to come back for another meeting anyway after the next meeting, whenever that is, well, that's automatically at least 60 days right there, so that's why, that's why I'm just trying to see if there was another meeting that had to happen after this one, so. Yep, so I mean, I...
It's the board's pleasure. There's, I think there's very little that can be done other than a check on status in October.
Yeah.
I think it, there's probably a lot more that could be accomplished. We'll know a lot more by November, so either one would be rational.
So would I be able to request a status update in October even if we weren't on the agenda for the meeting?
Status has to be...
Well, the status update that you'll want is from Joel, and you can contact Joel and Debbie directly on that.
I was misunderstanding that, okay. I understand.
Joel, yeah, you could, right.
Got it.
It's like, get off my plate.
When would be the...
And on the interpretation, and then, well, no, once you get the interpretation, Joel will, Joel will issue it, put a notice, he'll give it to you, give it to everybody, and then we'll know. And the problem is, if he does that before the October meeting, this board will get it, but I'm not sure...
And based on what happens, David, you may have to amend your application anyway by the deadline.
Right.
And then the county, like I said, I have to get, if they accept it, I have to get it to the county. That's another 30 days.
I understand.
I can't get by the county, unfortunately.
I don't have a strong feeling whether to come here in October or November. I have a feeling that, like, you might get some information for five minutes in October. You'd get a lot more information in November, I think.
I don't think it's worth it while we come here. We can't, we can't make a decision.
Yeah, it sounds like November makes the most sense, so.
Right.
Would you agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. So we'll accept November to be put on the agenda for that, please?
November, I think November. We'll be in a better position, you know?
So why don't you, why don't you entertain a motion to put it on the November agenda for further discussion?
Okay. Motion?
I'll do a motion to put it on the November for further discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
See you in November. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I think we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes!
Thank you very much, everybody. David, thank you.